At seven P M on November the fifth, twenty twenty five, would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Call this meeting to order and up next we have the roll call. Think we might miss one on the keypad. There we go.
Counselor Dominguez?
Here.
All counselors present, a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next we have the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, up next we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where we have anyone who would like to come up here and speak at the podium. I have the cards that are filled out. You would come up to the podium. We ask that you keep your comments to within two minutes. Your comments will be recorded and there's a clock right there that lets you know when we're out of time. We do ask that you end your comments properly at the two-minute mark. If you're still talking at the two-minute mark, we'll politely ask you to end and then have a seat so that the next person will have an opportunity to make their comments. Also, here at City Council in Alamosa, we practice civility, which means we're always mindful, thoughtful, and respectful of the people who are speaking during this part of the agenda. We ask that you don't clap, cheer, or make any comments so that that person can be fully heard. This time, we, as council members, do not respond to any questions that are permitted to us. However, at the end of the comment segment, our city attorney and city manager will reply to any comments that warrant any type of response. If you would like to hear more from city council members, we have a council comment segment at the very end of the agenda, and some council members may choose to make comments at that time. So the first person I have is Keith York.
And Mayor, they get three minutes, correct?
Three minutes. I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the two-minute drill, so.
Good. So I'm gonna start out with another statement about the intersection at first. Victoria and Stewart, one of the people that is usually here, had an accident there just this last week. I don't know if his daughter was with him or not, but I'm just gonna keep bringing this up every time there's an accident down there, which means I will probably bring this up every council meeting until something is done, or at least every other one. Also, I know one of the police officers here in town, his daughter had an accident at that same intersection a little while back. I don't know when. So the next thing that I wanted to talk about was thankfully, the bond, five A bond, did not pass, I guess, which is good. We don't need higher taxes, property taxes. It makes no sense in a city that is forty-eight percent renters and only fifty-two percent property owners. The rent would go up for every renter. And it makes no sense in the fact that if you did read the information that was given us, it said that it was a thirty million dollar bond, but we would not be paying back more than fifty-eight million. So that's a million dollars of waste every year that that million dollar, there's two million dollars being spent rather than one million dollar being spent right away. I mean, in whose world does that make sense? No one's, especially not to homeowners who are already, you know, many of them bought their property, paid for their houses over a lifetime of work, and then they miss a tax, property tax payment or two, and their property gets taken away. When, when they may have retired and they're on a fixed income, I just wanna make that statement, you know. People aren't thinking about their neighbors. They're only thinking about, well, I can afford it right now. Or we need to think of the kids, which is a huge manipulative ploy that the state uses.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Up next, we have Melanie Garcia.
Hi there. Good evening. I'm Melanie Garcia. I'm the property owner of five thirty-one Edison Avenue here in Alamosa. The reason for my presence here tonight is because we finally were able to get video footage of a sewer tap that was not installed at that location. The later part of last year of twenty twenty-four, the city of Alamosa hired a contractor to install new sewer lines in the alley between Main and Sixth and Ross and Edison, where I had vendors in the yard some of that year, and the vendors were saying that it smelled like sewer. But I knew it was all brand new, so I figured everything was done correctly. We didn't use the facilities, but only on weekends when we had the vendors there. Then in February, March of this year, we leased out the property. The tenant planned his grand opening for Cinco de Mayo weekend. He was doing great for a few hours until people started using the restrooms, and they started backing up all over the customers, on their clothing, on their shoes and everything, and making all the people upset. He would call me to complain, and I knew that the sewer lines were new. But I didn't know at the time what the problem was, and he ended up having the exact same thing happen every Friday and every Saturday and had to shut down doors early. Then around that same time, we had an issue in the yard, where a driver from the trucking company that we leased to, he had to call two tow trucks because there was a sinkhole in the yard. He had to get unstuck from that. At that point, around Memorial Weekend, we hired Rocky Mountain Septic to come out and help us out. We found our sewer line, and we kept running a camera, but we couldn't find the end of it. We went ahead and reinstalled a new sewer line, straight to the alley, but they ran the camera and they still couldn't find a tap. So we did call Harry, and Harry called Gardner Excavating, and we did get a tap installed immediately to our new line. We got the tap fee waived, but it does not suffice everyone's unexpected expenses because of this major mistake. And RMS camera was down for quite some time, and we did, finally did get it up and running last week. So I came in and I let Harry know. Harry was out there Monday with us and, or sent city staff out there with cameras, and we do got video footage that the initial tap was missed. And so the bottom line is, we are asking of how you recommend that we and our tenants go about getting reimbursed for our unexpected expenses at this mistake.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I don't have any more comment cards, so we're gonna go to the Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, if you could give them instructions of how to raise their hands so that they can be recognized to speak during this segment?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you wanna speak for public comment, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, it doesn't look like anyone is choosing to raise their hand.
Hey, I don't see any hands either, so we'll close the citizen comment segment and turn it back over to our city manager and legal for any follow-up at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. While Mr. Reynolds makes his way up to the podium to address concerns brought up by Ms. Garcia, just to clarify for the audience, listening to Mr. York's information, appreciate him sharing his concerns as it relates to five A, but just wanna make sure everyone's clear that that's the school board issue that was put before voters and not a city of Alamosa type of thing. But of course, we take all public comment, and that's great if he wants to keep coming to share his concerns about Victoria and Stewart intersection. I'll continue to share the same information as well, in that we are aware that there are accidents that are occurring there. The police chief and public works director have been looking at it, and we're getting ready to hire a traffic engineer. I know council knows this, but the public may not know this, is when you're making changes at intersections, it needs to be based on traffic engineering from a regulatory perspective. And so it's not something you can just go out and throw some cones out and do things like that. There is a bit more of a process and why it can't be overnight. So just wanted to share that. And then Harry, if you wanted to address the other item?
Yeah, I think for five fourteen Edison, I was working with Ms. Garcia when she first let us know that she was having problems. She did have RMS go out and camera the lateral line, which they were never able to get to the end of it. In speaking with RMS, the line, their lateral line was collapsed, but we weren't sure, we couldn't verify whether the tap was missed or not because of the flow. Send our camera in, the flow was too high. We never could tell. Working with Ms. Garcia, we talked about a solution. You know, we sat down and said, she knew her line needed replaced. She said that she would have her line replaced. I said, okay, if you do, if you agree to have your line replaced, I'll send the contractor over right now. We'll put in a new tap because there, nobody knew where the existing tap was. It kinda went around a building. We're gonna have to just kinda dig around and try to find it. So we had a mutual agreement that since she was replacing her lateral line, we would go in and put in new tap regardless whether the other one was there or not, fix that problem. Ms. Garcia has waited for a period of time to hire RMS to see if they had camera it to see if there was an existing tap or not. That's in hindsight. It didn't matter. We had an agreement that she was replacing the latter lateral line regardless. We were able to get her up and running for a event they had planned that weekend. That was the intention. So that was the status. We had an agreement. Regardless whether the tap was missed or not, it had no bearing on whether her lateral line was good or not. It needed replaced.
And Harry, sometimes you and I get lost in our technical language, but when we talk about a lateral line, that is the property owner's line that they are responsible for. And so what I heard you say is that was collapsed before it even got to our line where we are responsible. Am I understanding that correctly?
The private line was compromised. It had been used an over year, and that's why nobody knew there was a failure. I think that's why, also why it was missed because it was dry. So.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, ceremonial items, the mayor's challenge for little learners.
And yeah, we're all, come on up to the podium. There's a lot of people who have been involved in this effort, but Erin, let's, let's kinda have you go first, and if you don't give it enough pizzazz, I can jump in.
Sounds great. Thanks, Heather. I came with the pizzazz tonight, so thanks for giving me an opportunity to visit with you all. We are in a time of monumental and historic growth in the city of Alamosa. You can't drive a block within the central business district and not see something transformational occurring in our city. And one of those transformational projects is the realization of the Early Care and Learning Center, a concept that was started over twenty years ago, and Erin Mixes, a dear friend of mine, had once called this the albatross of Alamosa. It felt like the project that couldn't get done. I think we failed three times before this group was able to succeed to make this a reality. Over five years ago, a group of twenty-five people, including grandparents, stakeholders, early childhood educators, and people from the city of Alamosa and other employers, got together and said, we have to do something about our kids in Alamosa. We have grandparents who are raising their children, children who can't find spots in a childcare, employers who can't recruit and retain employees because there's not a spot to put kids. And if you do find a spot, it costs too much. So this group got together and said, we've gotta build a building. Boys and Girls Club was dumb enough to keep our hand raised when the opportunity came to provide some land. And I'm really glad that I've been a part of this project. We are now eighty-some percent of the way done with the funding for the building. If you have not taken a drive by two eighty-five and seen the incredible skyscape, you guys, it's in a beautiful building. It's gonna look amazing out there, and it's gonna serve a hundred and sixty children, with ten classrooms. It's gonna have workforce development, so we're gonna be growing up early childhood educators, an opportunity for observation rooms. Everything's kinda baked in. We'll have people from across the community that'll be able to be a part of it. And because the city of Alamosa is so dedicated to making sure that young people have safe places to grow up, the mayor made a challenge about a year ago and said, the city of Alamosa will put out fifty thousand dollars in match funds for every individual, every business that supports this project. And I'm happy to say, Mayor, that this, not only have we met your challenge, but we have eclipsed your challenge. With over thirty individual contributions from businesses, corporations, individuals, we have raised fifty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars towards your fifty thousand dollar match for a grand total of one hundred, six thousand, seven hundred dollars that your mayor's challenge has raised for this Early Care and Learning Center. So I'm really excited to announce that not only have we met the challenge, but we've eclipsed the challenge, and I really appreciate the mayor and city of Alamosa for this opportunity.
Thank you.
We should have coordinated a drum roll or something.
I know, right? Yeah. I had the Adam State people in here.
That, that's amazing, and I'm quite sure we have a lot of red lights are gonna be turning on real quick to make comments. And I just wanna say, it's, I thank you for the mayor's challenge and meeting that, but it's a collective effort with the city council and staff, and I wanna give them a round of applause for their efforts as well as the staff, too. So I'm gonna turn it over. The lights are on, and we'll start off with Counselor Krebs, then Counselor Hensley. Oh, Counselor Hensley, then Counselor Krebs.
Um, I just think this is awesome. What I'd like to add is obviously you've said everything, Erin, in regards to how needed this is. It is exciting. I drive by it all the time. I would like, though, to also, that we need to reflect that this is, we still need more, and that it's vital. And we have worked as a community, as partners, to get to where we're at now, and we just have that last hump to do it. But it is, it's hard when, when everybody's helped out so much. So that idea of remembering, we still need that extra help and to, for all of us to continue to make that happen so that this dream becomes a reality and that it's not in debt while we're doing it.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. I think Counselor Carson had his slide on, then Counselor Krebs. That's why yours. Okay, okay, Counselor Krebs?
Thank you. Congratulations on the success to date. It is very encouraging to see when you drive by it. What I think of when I see it is every time I hear comments or I think the city's getting bigger and bigger every day, something community-based happens that just brings me back down to the Stars Hollow that we are, and this is a perfect example of that. So thank you for all your work. Thank you. Please thank all your team members and your boards for all their hard work. It's, it's great to be a part of it.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. Counselor Carson?
Erin, you know, you spoke of the three efforts before, and I've seen and been involved with the Boys and Girls Club a lot in the past, and I've seen the different, the different entities that were involved, you know, and the different managers, and they were all good. But I think a lot of this has come to fruition because of your leadership, and I do appreciate that. The community appreciates that. The building is awesome, dude. I mean, it helped me in a conversation this morning, explaining to Liam about the tipped-over truck with the trosses, because it looks great. But great work to you, to everybody that's been involved. I don't wanna echo what everybody's set up here, but again, comes down to leadership, and that place has grown a lot, and it's just flourished under your leadership. And so says a lot, man. Good job.
Thank you. I also wanna say that in the audience with me is my co-executive director, Lola Garcia, who started this summer. She's in charge of operations program. So not only, you know, is our leadership strong with me, but it continues to get stronger every day.
Awesome.
And Mayor, I do think there is a check behind you. If council wanted to come down and present.
Let's do that.
Erin, thank you so very much. You're Ms. Garcia and your team, and like Counselor Carson said, the leadership is impeccable. Keep it up.
And Mayor, I'm sorry. It looks like Jamie or Counselor Dominguez's light might have been on. I'm sorry.
Counselor Dominguez, go ahead.
Yeah, real quick, congratulations, Erin. I always love working aside you in the community, but I'm, I'm glad that the community came together in this, this little push, even though more is needed. But I'm really proud of the community and the city for coming and jumping on board and helping this organization get a little closer to their goal. I always tell my kids, you know, crumbs make a cake, and that's how we gotta do it here in the Valley. So congratulations, guys.
Thanks, brother.
And Erin, I'm gonna wanna picture of you going through a bank drive-through with that check, please.
Wow, that's amazing. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for all your work and efforts in making that become a reality, working in harmony with the Boys and Girls Club. And thank you, council, for the many people you reached out to as well to help contribute towards the cause. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have Restorative Justice Month proclamation. Here in Alamosa, our city council share in reading proclamations so that everyone gets an opportunity to share a proclamation that means a lot to the community. Tonight, we have Counselor Krebs, who will be reading this month Restorative Justice Month proclamation. And for those of you who are here in honor of this proclamation, please feel free to come up to the podium right now as well. At the end of the proclamation, council might have some questions for you or may have some comments, and that we may allow one of you to make a few comments as well. In fact, will that, I see Mayor Medina is here. If you would like to say a few words right now, now would be a time to do so. Then Counselor Krebs will read the proclamation, and then we'll come down and present it to you.
I just thank you for having us here this evening. We have our deputy director, Clarissa Woodworth, Rita Wilcox with the ICM team, and my colleague in the diversion team, Roxy Gearing and myself. And we just want to share a few key notes about what restorative justice is, and Roxy's gonna share that.
We just wanted to acknowledge that this is something that has a long history in the Valley, over thirty years of the Stanley's Valley utilizing restorative justice approaches in schools, in court systems, with partners in this room, and that we work with a lot of system partners, including law enforcement, district attorney's office, public defender's office, judges, probation, and others to divert youth and adults out of the justice system whenever possible. And this helps folks take meaningful accountability of their words and actions, make meaningful repairs, and those participating in a restorative justice process reoffend at significantly lower rates. So we just wanted to acknowledge that though we are part of a Center for Restorative Programs, an organization that focuses on that, there are so many systems partners across the community that have made that work possible, and we just are appreciative of all the ways that this community has come together around restorative justice for the past thirty years and continues to do so. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Okay, all right. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. Restorative Justice Month proclamation. Whereas restorative justice emphasizes taking accountability, repairing harm to victims and community, and is rooted in the five principles of restorative justice: relationship, respect, responsibility, repair, and reintegration. And whereas Colorado has strong support for restorative justice with over forty statutes related to the juvenile and criminal legal system to build comprehensive legal infrastructure for using restorative justice. And whereas, Center for Restorative Programs is a local organization offering restorative approaches and building capacity in partnership with courts, criminal justice agencies, school, social service agencies, local law enforcement, and many other community agencies. And whereas, restorative justice is an effective approach in reducing recidivism, and whereas, community involvement is critical in addressing the broader impact of crime, harm, and healing. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Alamosa, Colorado, does hereby proclaim November first through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, as Restorative Justice Month. In witness thereof, they have set their hand and caused the seal of city of Alamosa to be affixed on this fifth day of November, twenty twenty-five.
Right, thank you. Let's go down and present. Oh, go ahead, Counselor. Quick, Mayor. Counselor Yanvi Hill?
Just wanna thank you for that work. We use RJ Circles in Center for Conflict, and when kids act up, and it works tremendously. If you don't know what RJ is, you should get on it, because it's truly good stuff. Thank you.
And I, too, would like to thank you for the work that you all do. I've seen kids go through the program from when I used to volunteer there to now they're grown adults with kids. And to see them come back up and say how much that program helped them when they were going through some challenges in life makes a difference. Okay, we don't have any more? Go down and sign it. Up next on the agenda, we have Consent Calendar A. I am going to abstain from voting on Consent Calendar A as I do work with C R H D C, so I will be abstaining.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously with Mayor Coleman abstaining from the vote.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Under regular business, annual planning commission's update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me. Have a few things that we've been doing. It's nice that the last year was a little quieter, because, or this year is a little quieter, because last year was pretty, pretty busy for us. But I'm really excited to be able to tell you that, you know, we keep plugging along, keep working through. And what we've been doing this, this, this year was, we, we always go over the annual three-mile annexation plan. We have a discussion, and we just, we go over it and make sure that we're having some transparency and communication if anyone wants to know what. if anyone wants to know what's happening in that regard. And we've had monthly updates from the code enforcement. What one of the things that we started to do when Captain Mestus was here is we started inviting him to present as a code, to tell, let us know what's going on in the community, let us know what's going on with code enforcement. And then when Sam left, we now have Captain Birch that comes in. And it really has increased, you know, just that that connection that we have with the code enforcement and what's going on. It's a lot easier when we when we're finding out that we're a few officers down than when we're able to go out in the community, when the community approaches us, we can let them know, you know, give us some patience. They're down, and code officers will let you know when things are happening. And it really has been a good communication tool that we've had on the planning commission. We had one variance request, one non-conforming to conforming use, one conditional use permit, one PUD major amendment. We had code discussions on form-based code alternatives, security fences, the landscape code, and other amendments. We had a presentation with the Alamosa County with their comp plan. And then me as the Planning Commission Chair, I have monthly meetings with the Planning Commission Chair. I'm going to go out on a limb. This is, this will be my last time that I'll be presenting to you. I'm going to step back as the Chair for the, on the Planning Commission. I'll still be a member for there. I've been doing this since 2009. So it's time for allowing some of the other commissioners to be able to step forward and have the opportunities that I have. I really had a rich opportunity to interact with Deacon and Rachel and the other staff members. So I'm going to go on a limb here and say, I'm going to take this risk because I don't really know what the protocol is, but I want to throw something out there for consideration. The planning commissioners have a lot of ideas, and sometimes they're actually good. So my hope is that there could be a more formal process or a regular process or something that could forward the ideas of the planning commission and the consensus to the City Council. And maybe a semi-monthly meeting between the PC Chair and the Mayor or something similar to that. Something like what I do, what I did with Deacon, to have that opportunity to be able to do that. So just as a consideration, you know, kind of think about that. The one thing that we'd like to do is be able to have that, that we have the connection with the city, the connection with staff, connection with the code officers. This would be a great opportunity to have that continued connection with the City Council. And then finally, the one thing I want, I want to say something that I experienced on the first Friday during homecoming week. And I just want to thank the city. I want to thank ASU for partnering on that first Friday with homecoming. I do want to say something. I want to recognize, and Liz would understand what this is, but I want to recognize that ASU's Title V, and they had a program called the TIPS, which is a team internship program. And that team internship program worked with the city, the chamber, and Adam State. There were twenty students, business students, that worked as professional consultants with the city and the chamber to be able to come up with ideas to get ASU students down to the downtown area. One of the concepts that came up was trying to figure out a way to use First Fridays or even create a first something, First Friday, First Thursday, or something to have some kind of special program with the university to get them down to the downtown. So the concept may not have come in saying, let's do our next homecoming, but it came up with these ideas, and the students came up with the idea to say, let's do something to get the two to work together. And the powers that be, all of a sudden, I get this email in my, at the college that said, ASU's homecoming bonfire is going to be downtown. Now, I do want to say I was a little bit scared thinking about, you know, the burning of Chicago once again, trying to figure out how that was going to occur. But I do want to say that it was well done. It was well organized, and it was an amazing, amazing opportunity. So I want to thank Liz's, her students, the city, the chamber, and everyone that was involved to be able to get that going, and I'm sure hoping that we'll have that opportunity. Thank you very much for allowing me to be here, to continue to communicate with the city and be part of this organization.
Thank you, thank you. And don't leave yet because we have the mics on, and I'm quite sure we have a few that have some comments for you, okay? Thank you.
You bet.
Counselor Hensley, and then Counselor Yanvi Hill?
So Mark, first, thank you. I know you're not leaving this board, but at the same time, thanks for your leadership on this board since 2009 and everything you've done. Your passion really shows through, and I think I would add one more thing that you may not be aware of from when you were part of the facilitation of those interns, is another suggestion they came up with was having some of them continue on or other students from the marketing side to help some of the small businesses. And quite a few of our small businesses have taken them up, and they are using them, and it's really making a difference as well. So I thought I would just add that because that's probably not necessarily public knowledge, but it has come from how you facilitated that internship group. So there's, it's continuing, and we talk about it a lot at the Main Street Committee as well, and other ideas that came up from that group. So it's still continuing to percolate.
That's amazing. Thank you for sharing that.
Counselor Yanvi Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to echo what Ms. Hensley said, Mark. Thank you for your service. I know you're not getting off, but coming up here for sixteen years and giving us reports and updates and that. Really appreciate it, and I want to say I really, I want to take you up on that offer of the planning and zoning and City Council meeting more throughout the year and hearing your ideas and of what you think the vision of that should look like in Alamosa.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counsel Viel. Counsel Carson?
Mark, thank you for your service. That's a long time. I didn't know you were there since 2009 as the Chair. But thank you very much, and thank you for your great ideas and leadership, and they still need you on there. So thank you for staying on.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Mark, you've been the Chair longer than any of us been on Council. That's a long time. Congratulations to you. I want to thank you for everything that you and Counselor Hensley worked on with the college students and making that first Friday Homecoming Weekend an amazing event downtown. I don't know what you all did with the transportation to get those students down there, but it was so amazing and impressive to see that amount of students and faculty and staff in that area under the green and changing color lights. So thank you so very much. Appreciate everything you do. And you brought up a suggestion, which Council, every year in January, we have a retreat. That's when we discuss these items. So we'll have further discussion with staff and then eventually get back and let you all know what, how that works out, okay?
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Just to let you know, they had buses going through, or vans going through every fifteen minutes from the, from the green. They were, they were committed to having buses or vans going through, I think, absolutely eleven o'clock or something in that, in that range. So Ventalcon and the group, but by that time, Title V had pulled out, the internship was over. And then the campus took over and Ventalcon did that. So well done on their part. And in terms of my, you know, I've been told I have commitment issues. Sixteen years here on the Planning Commission, thirty-three years at Adam State. So it's, one of these days, I come from, I'm a counselor educator, so one day I'll work on my commitment issues. So as long as I can benefit the community, I appreciate that. So thank you all.
You do benefit our committee, community, and we thank you, my friend.
Take care.
Take care. Thank you. Okay, wow, that's impressive. All right, that brings us to the next item on the, on the agenda, Public Hearing and Resolution, nineteen, twenty twenty-five, First Budget Amendment for 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. The details to this budget amendment are included in the attached resolution, and I'm not sure you want me to go through every one. I can. But overall, what I can tell you, since this is our first budget amendment, we've got a lot, and we're in October, no, November now. We've got a lot of items that we're cleaning up from that 2024 going into 2025, as well as we're already anticipating some changes that are going to carry over to 2026. So I would say probably ninety to ninety-five percent of what you see in this resolution is projects that didn't get finished in 2024. So we're having to amend the 2025 budget as well as projects we thought would get done in 2025 that we now know won't. So we're moving that to 2026. So that's about ninety to ninety-five percent of it. The other is grants that we did not anticipate and what they funded from a cost perspective and, and those types of things. There's maybe five where there's small budget overages, less than kind of fifteen thousand. But if Council has any questions, I can answer it, or I can go line item by line item as well.
So is there a way that we can open up the public hearing and then come back to Council?
Absolutely. Thank you for keeping us on track.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing for Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty twenty-five, the First Budget Amendment for 2025. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, this is the time to come up to the podium and make your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone coming to the podium, so now we're opening up for the audience who are on Zoom. Ms. Martinez, if you can give them instructions of how to raise their hand to be recognized during this public hearing?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for a public comment on this resolution, you'll use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Okay, Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to Council for any further comments or recommendation to staff. Counselor Yanvi Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading Resolution Number nineteen dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? No?
Just to clarify, it's first reading, and there's no second reading. So it's just to clarify that.
For clarification purposes, it's going to be a first reading and no second reading. Okay, motion, second. Please start voting.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the first reading of Ordinance Number twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five, Licensing and Regulating Massage Businesses.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance arises in response to last year's House Bill twenty-four dash thirteen seventy-one, where the Colorado Legislature requires any municipalities that have a massage business operating in that municipality to have a system for licensing and regulating massage businesses. The primary concern of the legislature was human trafficking and ills that follow from that. Alamosa does not currently have any massage businesses as those are defined by that bill because the definition of a massage business accepts out sole proprietorships, which is what we tend to have, or it's what we do have currently in Alamosa. We have licensed massage therapists who operate their own business as their own self-employed employee or masseuse. At one time, we did have what would have qualified as a massage business, which is a larger business that employs multiple masseuse employees. That would have been subject to these kind of regulations. So in some senses, this is a protective measure or a foreseeing measure. We aren't currently required to have this licensing provision. And if we were to adopt Ordinance Number twenty-four, no current massage businesses existing in Alamosa would be required to comply with anything because they fall into that sole proprietorship exception. But we don't want to lose track of this requirement in the future should we regain another massage business like we used to have in the past. So that's what this ordinance is about.
Okay, thank you. All right, so do you have any Council comments regarding, and any Council comments?
Counsel Yanvi Hill? Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I move that we pass Ordinance Number twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five on first reading and set it for a public hearing on November nineteenth, 2025 at seven PM.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Approval of Resolution Number seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, a resolution reestablishing the City of Alamosa Citizen Street Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to do a brief presentation because I think anytime we're talking about this project, it's important to make sure that we are providing as much information as possible. Because when you're talking about taxes, that's important to the public. When we're talking about streets, that's also important. So what we have coming up in 2026 is a desire to bring the half-cent dedicated street tax back before voters for a renewal. So that would be November of 2026. It's not a new tax, but it would be a question to renew the tax that was approved that had a ten-year sunset. We would again be bringing it with another ten-year sunset. So there's an accountability piece to make sure that we meet the promises that we are setting out with. We would estimate that this sales tax would generate a little bit more than two million annually. And this extension would become effective January first, 2030. Now, the existing tax, what is that impact on shoppers? If someone spent two dollars, that means one cent is going towards streets. If someone spends one hundred dollars, that means fifty cents is going towards streets. Or if someone spent twenty thousand, that meant one hundred dollars would be going towards streets. The half-cent dedicated street tax is dedicated one hundred percent to the streets that are identified in a resolution that Council will be adopting in 2026. That resolution is included in the ballot language, which locks in those streets that will be identified and presented to the voters. And so again, there's another accountability piece to make sure that what we're saying we're going to do is going to get done. And you get a different Council in five years that may have different priorities. That doesn't matter. There's still the accountability to the voters. How did we even end up with a street sales tax? One, we all drive our streets, and we knew the condition of the streets. But we also knew from the outreach that we had done with our citizens that this was a high priority for them as well. When our comprehensive plan, forty-four percent identified our streets as bad or very bad. Only twenty-nine, twenty-nine percent identified our streets as good, and another two percent for very good. Additionally, when we asked them to rate the three most important services, so this is everything that the city provides, at forty-five percent was smoother roads and forty-two percent sidewalks and bike lanes. From a street tax perspective, the other item that led to the need for a dedicated sales tax is just how many streets we have and how expensive they are to actually maintain. So we have over sixty-four miles of roads. Sixty of those are paved, four over four are unpaved. And if you think of how far that is, it's seventy-two miles to Walsenburg. So we almost have as many roads from here to Walsenburg to maintain. We are estimating that about a quarter of our streets need to be rebuilt. That's completely reconstructed. Back when we took this to the voters in 2019, the cost, the average cost per block was about three hundred thousand. Since that time, costs for a lot of things have gone up, and now per block, it is about five hundred and forty thousand dollars to do a reconstruction of a street. Additionally, when we look at doing overlays, and these are for streets that are in okay condition, that is about sixty-nine thousand per block, or a slurry sill is about twenty-seven thousand. Historically, when we look at what we have been spending on streets, you can see back into 2009, we were, we were maybe doing more a block, two blocks, kind of really inching along, trying to chip away at these. kind of really inching along trying to chip away at these over sixty miles of streets. You can see that huge jump with the dedicated tax from the street tax fund and what we anticipate going out to twenty twenty-nine when it sunsets. And then if it is not renewed, you can see what the budget drops back down to, which is about three hundred thousand. And again, it's five hundred and forty thousand to do one block. So there's going to be a big change if we don't look at renewing this tax. Now, when we look at doing street improvements, a lot of times we get concerns about equity of where we've done them in the community. And so if we look at the last fifteen years, so this includes before the street sales tax as well as during the street sales tax. You can see the blue are those areas where the city has built them. The green are streets that have been improved. And then there's a few brown, and those are the streets that have been paid for by the developers and other types of partners. So you can see throughout the community, we do have a lot of work that's been done on streets for the last fifteen years. Looking forward though, if we were to look at what our condition is of our streets right now, this is a map that shows us those streets that are fair, poor, and failing. So these are streets that may be identified for the extension of the sales tax where they are failing. Yes, council member?
When you say failing, does that include dirt roads?
No, but can I answer that in a minute?
Can we, can we let her go through the presentation? Then we'll bring up questions at that time, everybody, so we can go through it smoothly. All right, go ahead.
Okay. The other reason we needed to bring the first sales tax to the voters, and now there's the discussion of trying to renew it, is sales tax does not keep up with how much it costs to do street improvements. So again, one block costs five hundred and forty thousand. And if we look at the growth that we've seen in sales tax, we've saw twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two were actually higher than than normal. Part of that was with the stimulus checks issued through COVID. Some of that was the Supreme Court decision to be able to tax internet sales. And then some of it, rural communities ironically were not hit as hard with the shutdown of items related to COVID as some of the more metro cities because our population kind of stayed here, maybe shopped either here or online, and they weren't traveling as much. Places like Denver that relied a lot on internal recreational, like games, concerts, those types of things took a much bigger hit than some of the rural communities. But anyways, you can see twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we start to kind of get back to what we historically have seen from a sales tax perspective. Twenty twenty-five, we are budgeted for a two-point-seven-five percent increase. And as you know, for twenty twenty-six, it's kind of a net increase of zero percent. We're actually projecting one sales tax to be a negative one percent and the other one to be just a one percent. Our highway user tax fees only bring in about three hundred thousand per year. Cutting services also cannot get us enough money to pay for streets. So again, we need five hundred and forty thousand for one block. We could cut the entire legal division and not even get half of a block. We could cut the municipal court city clerk division and we can get a block. We couldn't get a full block by cutting the city manager's office nor the finance department. Council brings the least amount to the table on covering blocks. The parks department, we could get about a block and a half. Economic development, we can get about a half a block. So just cutting these areas does not necessarily get you what I think people think they're gonna get. The other way of looking at it is what if we just reduce personnel? And because that's where a lot of the city's budget outside of capital is in personnel. So if we take out public safety and we take out streets, our personnel cost for the general fund is about four-point-five million. In order to get the over two million that this dedicated tax brings in, we would have to cut forty-seven percent of our personnel from the general fund. So it's really not something we can accomplish through other means. So back in twenty eighteen, when council was considering doing this, they felt that it was critical to have community involvement in setting the priorities for the streets. They wanted to make sure that there is representation from the wards. They wanted to make sure there's representations from major employers and economic development, and then just to at-large volunteers. And the Citizen Street Committee took a look at all the streets within the city. And there was no boundaries given to them. They could use any type of priority system they wanted. They could put weight on whatever they wanted to put weight on. We, as city staff, just collected that information and had helped them walk through the process of doing some priorities. They identified eighty streets that needed to be repaired for a total of almost twenty-two miles. Of that, when we have to apply how much was the tax actually gonna bring in, we were able to prioritize sixteen streets for the next ten years, which was about seven and a half miles. So about twelve percent of the streets. They also recommended four hundred thousand each year for sidewalks and maintenance programs. And so the next step is those priorities were recommended to city council. You guys may be moved some from a timing perspective, but essentially those priorities were then locked in with a resolution and brought before the voters. So resolution thirteen twenty nineteen was approved unanimously by city council. It included the four hundred thousand for the sidewalk and overlay maintenance programs. And then it broke down into some timeframes, which streets would kind of happen first. So for that first timeframe between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three, we anticipated doing State Avenue, Fourteenth Street, First Street, Twelfth Street, some of those were overlays, and then State Avenue. If we would not have had the sales tax, we would have done a portion of First Street. The second timeframe was twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven. That included Victoria Street, Washington Avenue, Pike Avenue, La Vida, Second Street, West Sixth Street, and Seventh Street. Without the sales tax, we would have still been working on First Street and beginning a little bit of work on State Avenue. The third category of the timeframe from twenty twenty-eight to twenty thirty, Poncha Avenue, West Seventh Street, Tremont, Maroon Drive Overlay, Graff Drive, and then the Alamosa Avenue. Without the tax, we'd still be working on State Avenue. And then the last part of the resolution is if there was any funds that remain, either because sales tax outperformed what our projections were, or if we were able to get grants, if costs were maintained. These were the streets that we would look at and pull up for funding. And so we do anticipate Thomas Avenue will be what closes out this round of the sales tax. So when we look at the Streets Trust Fund so far and the impact that it's had on our community, you can see those that are green is what we have completed thus far. And those that are blue are the ones to still be completed with this first approved dedicated street sales tax. The ballot language, again, to emphasize the accountability and the transparency that council wanted to have with the voters, is it identified that this is a dedicated tax to be used only for those streets that were in the resolution. And it does sunset after ten years. So therefore, it's not open-ended, it wasn't just a free pot of money. It was very focused on a very priority-based driven by the community process. And what that brings us to why we are here tonight, which is to form the first step of that process of the Citizen Street Committee. And council held a work session and discussed if they wanted to kind of keep the complexion of that committee similar. And we are actually adding more to it. So we will still have two residents from each ward, we'll still have two residents at large. Council gave direction to add a youth representative. We're still gonna have two representatives from major employers, economic development, the chamber. We added a representative from Alamosa County. And we added a representative from the Alamosa School District of Bus Drivers. And to the question that Counselor Vial brought up. Oh, I'm losing track of time, but I know in the past, council has had multiple work sessions and discussions as it relates to some of our unpaved roads. And the direction that council had given during those work sessions is that when we convene this committee, they would want to make sure that this committee understands that that might be some priorities that council has as well to look at those unpaved roads to potentially include in their recommendations. But again, it will be a citizen-driven committee and we'll give them that information and what they do with it is gonna be up to them. But once they make a recommendation to council, it will remain your priority or your prerogative, I should say. If you want to add any type of street in there that maybe the street committee did not include. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, and city council for any questions.
Okay, I see one light on with Counselor Carson, but I think you answered Counselor Yon Vial's question. I just wanted to make sure that satisfied him, okay? Counselor Carson?
I'm pretty comfortable with all this, so I was gonna make a motion, but I wanted to make a comment first. This is how the city has done taxes. And this is a perfect opportunity for people who are concerned about streets or any other option. Just like two months ago, there was an election, open election, and people are free to run for city council seats. So this is an opportunity for people who are concerned about streets to get involved and have their voice heard and be more, be able to do more than just come and give public comment. Just putting that out there for everybody in the room. So this is one of those good opportunities that you have to be involved and make a change. The other thing I want to note is, if I'm not mistaken, the Victoria intersection involves a public taking of private property to correct, just putting that out there. I would like to make a motion that we form the Citizen Street Committee, that we adopt resolution seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, establishing the Citizen Street Advisory Committee.
We got a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second, and we have some discussion. Okay, Counselor Krebs, and then Counselor Yon Vial.
I just have a very quick question for the city manager. If anyone like listening or in the audience would be interested in being on this committee, what would be the process? Who would they reach out to, that kind of thing?
Yeah, so and thank you, that's probably something I definitely should have brought up. We will begin advertising the open seats and we will have the link to where it's the committees and boards that's done electronically through the city clerk's office. So we'll make sure to include those links. Also, if you guys, that was very informal. If council members are out talking to the community, we do encourage you to try to encourage people. We want to make sure that we get some really good representatives. So if you can help encourage it, and when you're talking to individuals, if they have questions, they can always call the city manager's office or the city clerk's office, and we can answer their questions and then direct them to the link for the application.
Is there a deadline or a date that they would need to respond by if they're interested?
We haven't said that yet, we'll put that in the advertisement.
Counselor Yon Vial, then Counselor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor, I want to add on to what Mr. Carson said. Really appreciate his words about people getting involved. And just really want to highlight to the public that. Taxes is a very sensitive subject. And look what the City of Alamosa did with your tax money. If you drive around town, you see all these new streets, these overlays, brand-new roads from the infrastructure underneath the ground to the tops, curb and gutter, sidewalk. Like we're doing what people asked, and we're a year out, and I'm a hundred percent behind this. And we gotta do this again because this is a perfect example of government working for people and doing what they asked to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Yon Vial, Counselor Carson.
And that's just what I wanted to highlight, that is the reason that this passed is because the community had the confidence in us because we bound ourselves to what we were gonna do. We committed, you know, on paper, in the ballot, that we were gonna do that. And we've done it, and I'm very happy that we've done that. We've stuck to it, we haven't moved that money anywhere else, and it's made a huge difference. So again, make that effort to be part of that process. It works when we're involved and, you know, be happy that we do have a functioning city that works well like that. I'm pleased with that all the time. I don't like the word proud, but I'm very pleased with us and pleased with council. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. I don't see any other lights on, but I'll just wrap things up. In my comments, the one thing I like about our city and our council and our staff, we're always transparent. Anything that we talk about and we try to bring about, we can actually provide the receipts to show you where the money is going. We're also accountable to the voters for every single penny that comes through the city. And we never have a problem with showing the constituents where that money is going. And then we always have proof. If you want to see where that money is, just drive up and down the streets. They used to tear up cars to where now people speed too fast on them because they're in that good of shape. So I want to thank council and I want to thank staff. This is gonna be a long haul for us to make sure that it passes and so that we can continue to get the funding. Because there's no way we could afford to cut not one single department because each and every single department that we have right now is so critical to the success that we're having as a city. So we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, please start voting.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Development Services Second Reading and Public Hearing, Ordinance Number twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending the Unified Development Code to repeal and replace Division five dash three landscaping and open space.
Thank you. Again, this is a second reading of an ordinance that we've talked about quite a few times. We did present this to you all in a work session in September. Also, our Pointing Commission dug its teeth into it, and I know our Commissioner Manzaneres is left, but I'd also like to just shout out to Commissioner Adams, who's in the room. So as is on the tin, this is about repealing and replacing the landscape code. There's a couple of reasons why we want to talk about doing that. One is, you know, it was a great concept. We had a lot of input, particularly from the tree board and just from community consensus that this is something we want to pursue. However, the way that it was written really was not in a way that could be applied in Alamosa. So for a long time, you know, we've looked at different ways where we can, you know, make the standards more clear for development and developers, but also give multiple different methods of compliance. So that's kind of the first thing that's on the list. The second is to try to incorporate some of our stormwater requirements. You know, talking about streets, stormwater is critical to the integrity of the street. And, you know, there's never gonna be enough pipes to get all the stormwater out of the system, you know, when we have one of those summer storms. And so how do we, how else can we manage that? It starts with development, making sure we can slow and, you know, slow the water that goes into the system. So this is a really great opportunity to do that. Also, state laws have been passed that are water-wise and water-conscious. So something that I think city council has really been aggressive towards is our own sort of water conservation measures and which we do also have in this proposed ordinance. But one of the more, the larger ticket items is from the state legislature, which requires the restriction of non-functioning turf. And so the best example that I can ever provide of that is, you know, if you're driving and you've got just a foot and a half of grass between the sidewalk and the curb, that's essentially what the first phase of this ordinance is designed to prohibit. It also includes things like artificial turf and then, you know, invasive plants, which is something we already prohibit anyway. And there is a second deadline in this state statute, which we aren't addressing now. Essentially, it's going to apply to residential development, and so that's something And so that's something that we will address uh in the coming years. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, uh, Deacon. What we're going to do is open up this uh public hearing to the uh. Citizens for comments and then we'll bring it back to council for any further comments. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing for ordinance number twenty two dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance amending the Unified Development Code to repeal and replace Division five dash three landscaping and open space. If we have anyone in the audience at this particular time who would like to make any comments during this hearing, please come up to the podium and make your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone coming up to the podium, so now we're turning it back over to the Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, would you give them instructions of how to raise their hand?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for public comment right now, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine.
Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further comments. Uh, Councilor Jan B. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number twenty two dash twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Second Reading and Public Hearing for Ordinance Number twenty three dash twenty twenty five. An ordinance amending the Unified Development Code to fix minor inconsistencies, expedite affordable housing, develop. Met review, clarify existing language, add standards for subdivisions, amend temporary sign regulations. And update certain regulations to comply with state statutes. Agenda. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And I like little fun facts and numbers. This is of thirty ordinances that have amended our, our UDC. This is the fifth longest title, so this isn't even close to the longest one we've had. Uh, so just a little fun fact. Um, so uh, this, this uh development, it's, it's got a lot of things in the title because, you know, in our ordinances, when we, we do this, we want to make sure that there's at least a decent understanding of. What's, what's uh being presented. Uh, there's really eleven changes that I want to highlight. Um, the first is to provide some sort of exemption or an off-ramp for public entities for uh new construction. This is something that's, that's. Uh, required in state law that we don't have in our code, so this is just adding an off-ramp for specific circumstances. Um, one is to allow childcare in the agricultural zone, so all the ag zone land is owned by the city of Alamosa or the county or jointly held. Really, this is to facilitate a potential partnership for uh the relocation of some childcare facilities onto city-owned land. So that's what that one's about. Uh, excuse me. One is a simple housekeeping amendment. Uh, you know, really just, there's. A typo in a table and it's just cleaning that up. Uh, one is to clarify how we uh classify smaller solar rays, so ones that are shorter than eight feet. Um, just a big hole in our code and we also didn't have any standards for small wind conversion systems. We've not seen one of these. It was just a blank section in our code and we just wanted to make sure that we had something in the event that something comes up. Uh, we added the prohibition for advertising electronic smoking devices or vapes, um, which is a state law that was passed in twenty twenty. It's just a lot easier if we have this in our code to point to it than trying to refer people to state law and, you know, it's, it's just easier for us to communicate to people with that. Uh, one is to clarify that merchandise can't be used as a sign element unless it's part of the principal use. Again, this came from our work session where we talked about this. Uh, a lot of times these little sign uh amendments are to uh counteract very specific narrow circumstances. And so. We narrowed that definition and that provision up just to make sure it, it didn't overreach into areas we didn't want. Uh, one is to amend the Zone of Benefit Recovery. So if a developer puts in infrastructure, they're uh allowed to apply for. Uh. An opportunity to recover some of their investment if uh developers after them add on. Really, this is just making sure that uh eight inch sewer lines are allowed because that's a very standard size for us. Um, one is adding our subdivision plat standards. That was repealed in twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen, excuse me. Uh, with the repealment of chapter seventeen, so this is just adding some of that information back in. Um, one is to codify how we already uh approach affordable housing development review. Um, essentially, this is just putting it in the code saying we're going to expedite it. Really, this is um. It's, it's essentially a fifty thousand dollar check for the city to be able to have this. It's nothing different than what we do, but it's just saying to the state uh that, hey, you know, we're very serious about this. One is to add or revise some different definitions. Uh, we did include one uh. Uh, new definition that we're striking because it was a duplicate. There was a definition for sign comma temporary and for temporary sign. And they didn't match, so that's a problem. We want to just get rid of that. And then there is one other uh amendment between first reading and second reading. Um, you know, over the, the past several years, we've added new land use categories that didn't exist. One thing that we never did was add any parking standards for that. Uh, so this is just kind of cleaning up that discrepancy. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you, Deacon. So we'll go, go ahead and open up the second reading and public hearing for ordinance number twenty three, twenty twenty five. And ordinance amending the Unified Development Code to fix minor inconsistencies that Deacon just covered. So if you're in the audience and this is a public hearing, we're opening it up right now. If you have any comments. Now is the time to come up to the podium and make your comments in this public hearing. I don't see anyone coming to the podium, so we'll go ahead and uh. Go to the Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, if you would share with them how to raise their, their hands.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for public comment, you're going to use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see any hands being raised.
Okay, I don't see any hands either, so uh we'll bring it, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further uh comments. Councilor Jan B. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. Want to thank uh Deacon and staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission for your work on this. Want to um make a motion to approve on second reading ordinance number twenty three dash twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Councilor Dominguez?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. And Deacon, before you have a seat, I just want to say a few comments about you. Um. As you all can tell, Deacon has spent a lot of time going through all of this here work to clarify the cleanup. He, Rachel and his team and Harry and the rest of them. Last week, um, I had a development meeting with a lot of developers, contractors, architect, people from the front range. Uh, at the Tera Zoo subdivision. They were overwhelmed and thoroughly impressed with the city staff. Uh, and Deacon's work along with Rachel's and uh Harry's uh work as well and our Public Works Department. They kept saying they wish other communities would come to Alamosa just to see how we conduct business. So that they could take the lead from the work that our team is doing. I just want you to know that, Deacon, you, you, you come up in all the conversations in a positive light and we just thank you for the hard work you do in representing our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the next item. We have um committee reports. Do we have any committee reports today, Councilor? Uh. Jackie B. Hill and Councilor Krebs.
I have a report for the homeless coalition, which was held last week. Um. There was discussions about educational material, materials and what our next steps should be. Um, we kind of tabled that because there was a lot of ideas on that. Um, then there was general updates on Saint Benedict. Um, right now there's sixteen people there. And um, the um. CSOs and the police department said that everything's going smooth there. And so they were pretty um stoked about that. Um, they hired one new CSO. Um, they've given a hundred and eight bus tickets since January. For people to go wherever they needed to go. Um, Horizon Heights is doing well. Um. They've transitioned out um sixteen to seventeen tenants. Um, they've only had two evictions thus far. Um, Century Mobile Home Park, um, I guess. Um, they were. Having an issue removing um. Trailers because of the asbestos issue. And so the state intervened and said you can't do it unless you're, they're tested again. So they're having to go through the process again. Um, at Boyd School, the playground is going up. And there you've, if anybody's noticed, the new sidewalks around Boyd School. Um, let's see. For the housing, they have not hired a new director yet. Um, but they're looking and. La Puente was talking about their winter cot program. And um what that's going to look like this year. Um. Oh, and then they talked about um a lot about the SNAP benefits. Um, that people did not receive in November and we were talking about the um, that the food pantries are trying to. Help offset that a little bit. And so they were asking people to think about giving monetary donations for people so they would have. Money, arming food for the holidays and stuff. And I think the last thing was our youth representative who was very um involved and. In the coalition, she's trying to get cabinets for pantries that are placed around town. And so um they're trying to raise twenty five hundred by December, so she can. I, I, I guess she's um, she's, uh, has people to build the cabinets and stuff, but they still need about twenty five hundred. So anybody that's interested. Should get a hold of her. And I think that's about it.
All right, very good thorough report. Thank you, Councilor Jackie B. Hill. Good job. Hey, Councilor Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So I had a rush of meetings in the last little bit. So for the senior center. Just a, um, they're just getting ready for their annual bazaar on November fifteenth. It starts at ten AM and so they urge everyone to attend. For the Alamosa Housing Authority, the remodeling of the units is almost complete. They, they set out to remodel eight units and they're, they're just now starting on seven, so they're doing really well with that. Alamosa Creates Committee, um, the last meeting, they. Have, they've been doing the process of the application to the state, but now that the. The art fest is behind the group, they can use that information and those numbers. To help bolster the application. And so they're going into the details of that. Plus, they also talked about a very successful art fest and they're all looking forward to having a similar one next year. Um, SLV Cog. The Council of Governments. Um, one item of note was they are planning on giving a presentation to um. Interested people here in the valley to update the valley residents on the state wolf release. Every county, it um seems every county in the SLV has wolf activity reported. And so they are trying to bring in some people to hear more on how to navigate the mitigation. To give the information to local ranchers. And also that CSU is offering an internship for farmers um around agricultural business. And finally, the SLV DRG. Um, some things of notes, the Opportunity Zone is getting redesignated. They will have an AI presentation November fourteenth for leaders and small business owners to learn more about that. Aaron Minx is the DRG contractor for the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And there's plans to hold a work session around that. And then saving the, the best for last, the Enterprise Zone redesignation has been approved. With last year's impact in the valley was three hundred and sixty nine point seven million dollars. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs. Appreciate that report. Okay, I don't see any other lights on. Um. Hands raised, so we're done with the uh committee reports. We'll turn it over to staff announcements.
So we do have a few different staff and so as they make their different ways up to the thing, I'll fill in with some of my own updates. I guess we're starting with Chief Ding Felder.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, just want to give you a, at the beginning of the year, we set some uh goals on reducing crime. In the city and then we, granted, we still have almost two months to go, just under two months to go. But I've been pretty pleased. Um, so one of our main goals was reduce violent crime in the city by five percent. Um, and we, we said we were going to do this through proactive policing, um, changing our strategies. And targeting violent criminals. And to date, our violent crimes, so violent crime homicides, sex assault, robbery, aggravated assault is down twenty seven percent. So we're significantly down in violent crime. Uh, and that's just really. Uh, the work of the officers uh and them going out and working hard. Um. Captain Birch and his detectives, you, I think you've seen some of the drug stuff that they've done. That's really making a big difference in reducing our violent crime. Um, property crime overall, burglary, larceny, vehicle theft. Um, the only category that is up in that is, is auto theft. Auto theft is up just a little bit, but overall property crime is down nineteen percent within the city. Uh, vehicle theft always frustrates me. It's, it's, you know, not somebody going and, and uh breaking into the car. Uh, the majority of the vehicle thefts we get are people leave the keys in the car and leave them unlocked, as same with vehicle burglaries. So it's very simple. Take your keys out of your car and lock your car. But we're up just slightly in that, but really those are the only, um, that's the only one they're up. And then the other thing that we've really concentrated on this year is reducing uh crashes in the city. Granted, we still have a long ways to go in managing traffic, but overall traffic crashes are down four percent. And we cover a lot of private property crashes and that's a discussion I'm going to have with Heather next week about our private property crash. Um, response as well as me and Eric have talked a little bit about this. But we spend in an ordinance on time on private property crashes when the state doesn't even accept those as uh, as a report because it's. You don't have to report private property crash unless it's DUI, vehicle homicide, vehicle assault. Um, careless driving, reckless driving. Other than that, we're just out there basically taking a report for insurance companies and it's wasting a lot of time, but. That's a discussion I'm going to have with Heather next week before we bring it back to you guys, so. But that's all I wanted to update you guys on, but we're, we're doing good. Um, crime is down significantly, so uh hopefully we can keep on that trend. So any questions?
I don't see any lights on, Chief, but um.
If we could have a collective knock on wood, that, I think that would be great.
Chief, I was taking notes, so you have some people in the community who needs to hear this. Can you tell me what was down twenty seven percent?
Yeah, violent crime. So what's it? We report all of our crime in, it's called NIBRs. It's basically the FBI's reporting. So violent crime is, is identified as homicide, sex assault, robbery and aggravated assault. So like, you know, a serious assault. Not just punching somebody or something like that. So that's down twenty seven percent. Robbery is up a little bit, but again, robbery is another one of those, uh, it's kind of got a broad definition. So. The way I always like to explain it is if Eric's walking down the street with his satchel and I run up and grab it from him, that can, can be considered robbery. It's strong arm robbery. Not necessarily pointing a gun at him and robbing him, but if I run up and take his satchel from him, then that could be considered robbery.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Councilor Carson?
I, I had a quick question just for clarity. So just. The, the state changes to the law of like, of. Trespassing the third time and making it a burglary, does that affect that robbery increase at all? Because that seems like a soft effect, it could have a soft effect on it.
No, uh, trespassing, uh, trespassing is not um, not, doesn't fall under that category of a crime. That's more uh miscellaneous type crime, so. Trespassing, uh, that would be fall under burglary.
Okay, okay, I was.
So it's property crime versus a people crime.
Yeah, because the third one now is a burglary, huh?
No, um.
I think it is, right? Three, three trespass, three thefts, three shopliftings is a burglary?
You, you're talking city ordinance or, or state statute?
I thought state and city. I thought it was both that adopted it.
No, so what they did with, one of the things they did with, with uh burglary is if. If you. if you, they they call it burglary if you've been trespassed from a business. For example, if you go to Alta and you've been trespassed from there and you go back and you steal simply a candy bar, it's now considered burglary because you went back in there with the intent to commit a crime.
And that was my point. I was wondering if that kind of, I I consider that kind of a, you know what I mean? They weren't really stealing anything, but it's burglary now. And so has that increased the? Is that increasing number?
Uh, no, because our our property crimes, which is uh burglary, larceny and vehicle theft are down nineteen percent. However, the only category that's up in that is vehicle theft.
Okay, understood.
So our burglaries are down and our shoplifting is down.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Okay. Deacon.
So some of you uh, may have seen this during the uh, the re uh vamping of the Boyd Park and as you go to the ribbon cutting, uh, you'll see a lot of torn out sidewalk along the former Boyd School property. And so that is part of a uh, a city uh funded, or a a grant funded to the city, which is a pass through to uh, the San Luis Valley Housing Coalition to first uh, upgrade those sidewalks. There's gonna be some um, a little bit of curb and gutter work and some unglamorous things like storm sewer as well. Uh, this is just one of a handful of grants that um, the Boyd Project uh, is is covered with. Um, and this is a really exciting thing. Just last week, I had the pleasure of seeing the the new designs and uh, this gives me a chance to throw back a compliment. Um, so you know, we can come up with all sorts of um, wild ideas, but you know, without the leadership of Heather and without council support, it doesn't make any difference. But I feel like the Boyd School is a really good case in point. There were specifically two ordinances that you all have passed in the last about two years that have done a lot to facilitate the success of that project. So the first one uh, is that alternative design standards. So that was one that was done just in April. Huge deal. Um, the other one is having that, you know, sliding scale parking ratio for uh, affordable housing and and really taking a deep dive in that. Um, because essentially what the old code would have required seventy-seven parking spaces, it's down to fifty-one. And you know, parking spaces are, you know, five, ten thousand dollars essentially. Uh, not only to build, to maintain and you're losing uh, developable space and then you gotta have, you know, stormwater infrastructure to support it. So those are kind of, you know, seemingly small changes, but they really do go to um facilitate some of these larger goals that we are all striving for. So, thank you.
Okay, I don't see any lights on. Thank you, Deacon. Chief.
Council, Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago to talk to the representatives of Trinidad Trinidad State University uh, College. And thank you very much, uh, Councilmember uh, Hensley for making that happen. Uh, we got to discuss uh, looking down the road of of creating a fire academy similar to the police academy that is actually uh uh, hosted by by Trinidad. And uh, they were very receptive to it. Uh, so tentatively, we're looking at uh, the spring summertime, uh, doing like a basic fire uh, academy with hazardous materials training and then also partnering with the state uh, to actually uh, the student will not only get a certificate, but have the opportunity to to do a certification test. So, and then possibly some some future e- expansion of the program into maybe higher education. Uh, so that's sort of where we're at and uh, just glad to report that out to y'all.
Okay, Chief, I want to thank you. I did see that email this weekend. It brought joy to my soul. So great job and Councilor Hensley as well. Thank you for your efforts in that as well.
Okay, um, just a few reminders for for City Council. This Sunday is the celebration of life for Sheriff Jackson's wife, Andy. Um, obviously Sheriff Jackson and and his family have had a big impact on Alamosa. But also as a reminder, he spent some of his career working with the city of Alamosa and and so I think there's gonna be a fairly decent contingency of of city people there. Next Wednesday, we do have a work session to um, review and talk about the draft tourism strategy. We also um, on Monday, November tenth at four thirty, have the wheelchair accessible swing ribbon cutting here at Cole Park. And then next Mon, the two Mondays on the seventeenth at six, we do have the new counselor orientation. Um, all of you guys had the pleasure of having your orientation with the city clerk, city attorney and city manager. Um, now that we are a member of SIRS, it was brought to our attention that they do um, a new council orientation as well. It's it's probably more in depth than what we've provided and there are some aspects as far as um, legal risk to to council members personally that I feel is very vulnerable or very important to be covered. And so um, thank you to those who, even though you've been through one orientation, are talking about coming on November seventeenth, cause some of it will be repeat, but I think there are other parts that that are not repeat. On that, we obviously had an election yesterday and so I want to congratulate everyone who has been re-elected and obviously we will be welcoming um, Mr. Mark Martinez as well from from that outcome. And lastly, I just wanted to report out that the mayor and I attended um, a meeting last week. ASU held a Valley Leader Strategy Luncheon. And um, I feel it was very informative. It's something that I wish our community could see the information that was presented. We have a lot of threats that are coming towards the valley. It's it's coming towards a lot of areas, but the valley is uniquely situated because of our demographics, our rural nature and how much we rely on some of these institutions that when they're threatened at this level um, from an economic legislative perspective, i- i- it could have very serious consequences for us um, from a valley perspective. ASU provided information on how different federal and state cuts are gonna impact them. Um, how some of the things being discussed legislatively will impact them and and their ability to provide higher education. Trinidad State College um, also reviewed that. They also talked about the impact to their students and how our student population is greatly dependent on some of the programs that are being cut as well. So it's not just institutions, but it's the lives of students. Um, and when we talk about our demographics and trying to break the cycle of poverty and lift people up, when you talk about institutions of higher education, that's one of the most effective tools to break that cycle and lift people up. And so it's really going to hurt us when those are in jeopardy. We also got updates from our agricultural partners and what's going on for them from an economic perspective and obviously our number one economic driver in the valley is agriculture. And when there's threats there, it impacts everything. And then the one of the others is our healthcare industry. Um, so not only is this jobs, but this is care for our community and having to drive two hours um, to receive certain types if they need to start cutting care. Um, and the changes that are going on, there's a ripple effect that that's going to hit these institutions. And then finally, there was a discussion on our um, nonprofits and if they're gonna be able to withstand um, the climate that is coming. And so I think it was very sobering. I um, really appreciate the leaders that were in attendance. I think the point was to come together as an entire valley so we can advocate with one voice and try to try to pr- protect um, our homes. And Mayor, that's all I have and I'm not sure if you wanted to add anymore to that.
No, I think you covered it all, uh, Ms. Sanchez, and it it just shows the importance of how in a very short notice, how our community partners and leaders came together to address some major concerns that are affecting our community and to be that united voice. Um, so thank you for sharing that. I I see we have a couple of lights on, so I'm gonna recognize uh, some of the council members.
Just a question for you, Heather, and or Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Is um, you said the cuts at the federal level affecting higher education, Adam State and TSJ. Um, what can you comment on the threats to agriculture? What were those specifically?
And I wanna go to the first part. So it's it's federal cuts, but then also when there's cuts or changes to the state and the state struggle is also impacting the university or higher education. And I'm not gonna have the statistics, but it was it was very scary, but I know Dr. Tanberg talked about CSU and their dependency on state funding is like maybe five percent or something like that. Don't quote me on this for their budget, whereas ASU's dependencies double digits. And 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 there's a huge difference. So when the state has less discretionary income and higher education's discretionary income and they talk about reducing it, places like ASU are gonna get hit worse than other higher institutions in the state of Colorado. In regards to agriculture, it's the cost of goods, it's it's the ability to import or export, I should say, um, what's going on in the economy for people to purchase their goods um, type of situation. I'm trying to think, they didn't have, he didn't have a lot of PowerPoint. He just did a lot of talking.
He did a lot of talking. He didn't have a lot of PowerPoints, but the good thing was is he really did a good job of representing the agriculture community. Uh, and he was from, I believe it was the South Canales area as well. So it was really good to hear that perspective.
And he also, sorry.
Go ahead. I just don't have my notes in front of me right now.
So put up obviously the water, the threat to our water rights and and those things, but he also shared that there are some farms that have um, closed um, in this economic climate.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay, I don't see any other lights on, but I know uh, Ms. Sanchez made mention of the um, council orientation. I just want to thank those of you who signed up uh, for the council orientation utilizing the SIRS information. I think in the climate that we're in right now is so crucial that we get updated with some of the changes that are going on in uh, in our industry and what we do. So thank you all who've signed up so far. And uh, look forward to um, being in that training as well with you all on the seventeenth. Okay, any other um, staff announcements? Okay, all right. So that's gonna move us to the next item on the agenda. Local liquor licensing uh, authority actions. Needs and desires hearing for Moms and Pops Country Kitchen.
Thank you, Mayor. And as is typical, um, I will go ahead and be the hearing officer for that hearing. Uh, and then at the conclusion of the hearing, we'll turn it back over to council for council's consideration. Uh, the way this hearing will be structured is that the applicant can come forward and give a presentation about the nature of the application and anything they want to address to council. Um, I may or may not have questions for the applicant. Then the hearing will be open to anybody who wants to speak to the application, either uh, in support of it or in opposition to it. I don't know if we still have anybody on uh, Zoom, but after the people present in the council chambers have had their opportunity to speak at the public hearing, we'll we'll go to Zoom and then we'll turn it back over to council. Council, if uh, any council member has questions of the applicant, the applicant can be called back up to answer those questions. Um, before we close the public hearing. And so i- i- before I close it, I'll ask if council has any further questions and then we'll turn it back over to council for discussion. Um, and most likely a vote. So with that, I'm assuming there is somebody here from Mom and Pops to address council. Very good. Please.
Thank you so much for having me, Mr. Coleman. I haven't seen you in like ten years.
It's been a while.
It has. Thank you, Board, so much for having me.
Good to see you.
I don't actually have a presentation. It's pretty cut and dry. Uh, my building has always had alcohol. We're connected to a bar. Um, I'm only looking to do beer and wine individual servings. I don't want my staff to have access to open alcohol. I'm not an alcohol girl, but I am a money girl. And I've never done this before. I've never wanted alcohol. I'm a cook. I'm a nurturer. That's what I do. Half my clientele is asking for liquor. They just want beer and I'm cool with that. Have a beer while you're eating your burger. I'm good with that. You know, and like I said, it's all individuals. You know, so there's no open kegs or anything like that. No, no hard alcohol. We also DoorDash and DoorDash delivers. So this could be a big thing for me and husband at our ages. Yeah. And that is my husband, Pops. His name is Steve Johnson. My assistant, right here, Jesse Moore, the owner of the building. I think you probably all know Barbara Parker. And my server, Rihanna came with us too, but she has a nine-year-old daughter and she had to go. So that's about all I've got. I don't know what I'm supposed to present to you. That's that's what I have, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Let let me ask a question, Ms. Johnson. So you mentioned that half your customers request alcohol. Is that like when they're sitting down to order and they say, hey, can I order a beer?
No, it's usually before. We get a lot of phone calls too, especially with the holidays coming up. I lost all the Christmas parties last year from not having alcohol. They're already calling to find out if we'll have it this year. And I tell them that yes, we'll have the individual bottles of uh, beer and wine.
Okay, um, did you have any petitions or anything that anybody signed?
No, I didn't know what I should have on there. I invited a lot of people to come and this is who came.
Okay, yeah, just asking that. Um, and I'll ask of the clerk, uh, so Ms. Martinez, the it's my understanding the property was posted with the application on September twenty-fourth of this year. Is that right?
Correct.
And that uh, the hearing was published in the Valley Courier on October eighteenth of twenty twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have a copy of the posting?
The poster?
Excellent. Let's bring that up.
Thanks, Jess.
And so this is the poster that was posted.
On our front door.
On your front door. Great. We'll mark this as Exhibit A. And I will also note for the record that a photograph of the Exhibit A poster was made a part of the packet materials. Um, did council have any questions of Ms. Johnson at this point, or shall we move to public comment?
Let's go ahead and move to public comment.
Very good. Ms. Johnson, if you want to take a seat. Anybody who wants to speak in favor of or in support of or in opposition to this application for issuance of a uh, hotel and restaurant license at twelve ten eighth street, please come up to a microphone and make your comments. I don't see anybody making their way to the microphone. Do we have anybody left on Zoom?
We do not.
Okay. Um, does council have any further questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
Doesn't look like I have any lights on here.
All right, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor. Close the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, we would like to close the public hearing um, for the Mom and Pops Country Kitchen. And I'll turn it over to council for um, their motion and um, well, discussion. Do we have any discussion? Okay.
I guess I'd I'll just say is that I've kind of always been consistent with this, that having been from the restaurant business for so many years, um, knowing the importance of being able to offer um, in a responsible way, alcohol to the customers always helps business and I'm very um, supportive of doing what we can to help our small businesses. So with that in mind, um, I have no concerns over this.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carson?
Um, Holly, in regards, I'm just, and this is just for for memory. In regards to the application process, did we put something in there to um, encourage them to get tips training or or training for staff? Did we have, did we talk about adding something for that? And if not, I'll just put that out there to Counselor Hensley's comments. Uh, we always encourage business owners that are gonna start serving alcohol to have their staff trained with the tips training or a similar training and in making sure they're doing things properly and not selling to the wrong person and carding and making sure all that has been done um, so that we can avoid alcohol being consumed by minors.
All righty. So no other comments? So no other comments. Now would be the time to make a motion.
Question, 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 question. For Holly, Holly, would this be a new license or does the building have a license? They would just get, take that?
No. So this, this building has had a licensed in the past. The same type of license, the hotel restaurant, which they're applying for, but it hasn't had one in years. So they are applying for a new license there again.
I thi- so my question is, is this a motion situation or are you getting our, our consensus?
What I would look for would be a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare findings consistent with, uh, either granting or denying the license.
So I'll move with what you just said with granting a license.
Seconded.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Okay. If not, please start voting.
Counselor Dominguez?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Good. All right. Okay. That brings us to the, uh, final item on our agenda for tonight, which is, uh, council comments. Do we have any council comments? If so, turn your lights on. Counselor Young, be here.
Thank Mayor.
Counselor Carson.
Oh, no, I was before him.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Mine will be lengthy.
Mine will be quick. Um, just want to thank the city of Alamosa and those who voted in the election yesterday. I appreciate and I'm honored to serve the city for four more years. Uh, want to give a shout out to Zachary Reeves for running a clean race and offering new and good ideas and pushing me to be a better counselor. And I'm, uh, excited for the next four years and the team that I'm serving with up here. And, uh, want to encourage everybody to go watch the number one volleyball team in the state who play on Friday in the regional round. I believe they start at one or two o'clock in the afternoon, two o'clock on Friday. Go check them out. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Young and Hill. Counselor Carson and then Counselor Jackie Veho.
Um, go ahead.
Yours has been going to be long, right? No, I just want to, I want to wish, uh, Counselor Dominguez the best. And thank you for your service on the council and, I, you were great on the council and we're going to miss you.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Carson, then Counselor Cribbs.
I will echo that. Thank you, Jamie, very much. Um, sorry you couldn't stay and, you know, looks like we got somebody good with Mark, so hopefully he can, hopefully he'll blend into the team good and contribute to our ideas. Um, one of our powers or one of our strengths on this council is being diverse, diverse views, different paradigms of the world, and that always makes for better policy, for sure. I will state that publicly and, and I will stand behind that. Now with that, I just want to, uh, bring something up that it, it's something that came to my attention a while back and, uh, I want to see if we can take some action on it, Heather. Um, I, I know that, I know it's been on our radar before, uh, but I really want to push that we start supporting, uh, or trying to figure out how to support this entity. But I, I've come into contact recently with the Rocky Mountain Transit Group. You guys know who they are? Those blue buses that are driving around? They go from Salida. You guys know who they are? Heather, have you seen them? Have they come to the city at all?
They haven't. I, I think, um, when there's been transportation issues or discussions from a regional perspective, Kathy and Rachel have been our representatives. So I, I would have to check in with them.
Okay. Well, I just want to put it out here to, I mean, if Deacon has input on it, I, but I do want to put it out here that, um, I'd like to see, uh, I did talk to the guy. He may, he was going to try to come from Salida tonight, but I never confirmed with him times to come present at public comment. But I would like to see if we could wrap them in as being one of their communities. Cause every community around us is using them and helping, they, it's basically based on a chip in kind of grant thing. But they're based out of Salida. A lot of the smaller communities around us are using them. We need public transportation that people can't, you know, when people can't pay for it. It's, it's a free ride. Um, I talked to the guy at length. They have a really good open model and they do have a website. I'll, uh, I'll send that tomorrow to Heather. I didn't send it to her, but I will, I will send it to her just so that she can at least share the information or start pondering it. And Heather, I apologize for catching you off guard with this, but I would like to see about, maybe talking more about it and either if we add it to budget next year, do something to help. Because, uh, I know there's some private concern around that, I think, around public transportation, but, or private business concern. But I talked to the guy quite a bit. They have a pretty decent model. Um, and I, I'd like to at least consider, especially because he told me the Freedom Wagon was getting ready to shut down. They've been helping a lot of people. So anything we could do in that respect.
Well, no, we're just saying, and Deacon, I'm sorry I called you up because my brain was kind of circling. Um, I, I would say instead of getting too much into, to this tonight, my knowledge is there's different providers doing different services in the valley. And, and I, I would recommend instead of focusing in on one, if this is an area council wants to start getting into, that we provide the full picture of what's going on from a transportation perspective and how different pieces fit or don't fit, um, where there may be gaps or, or not and, and that kind of thing. And so I, I think that this is not the only game in town. And, and so I just think if this is something you guys want to get into, which is your prerogative, I would just highly recommend that we look at the complete picture.
And I appreciate that. And I, and again, I'm not trying to get into a back and forth here, but I understand it's not the only game in town, but for years now, and I mean years, since I've been on council, I've been seeing this game not move anywhere. You know what I mean? There is private, private businesses that do help. Valleywide's helping. A lot of these other companies, MedRide's come along. But this is a somewhat of a different service and, uh, I'd at least, I'm going to at least have him come speak to us at public comment. He wanted to do that tonight, but I didn't get back to the guy in time. Uh, I talked to him at length and the model's pretty good and they do a good free service. So again, not knocking anybody that's doing anything, but anything that we can add to that pot of tools or, or you mean that toolbox for, to help people out. We, we go above and beyond all the time in other respects. Um, from talking to him, this is just one of those things that I think would be a good fit for Alamosa. They're moving people around through Alamosa anyway, you know what I mean? So if we could get in on that, I think it would be beneficial to a lot of people. So let's just at least ponder it.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Cribbs and then Counselor, uh, Young, be here.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to take an opportunity to thank the community for, for their support and for my fellow council members for believing in me when they first nominated me to this position. It feels like a very long time ago. And, um, and then I also want to take a very small opportunity to, um, thank Counselor Dominguez for his service on the board. This was the first time I've worked with him and it was, it was an honor and a pleasure, sir. And hopefully we have a chance to collaborate in the future.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Young and Hill.
Real quick, Mayor, want to, uh, recognize the scouts that are in the crowd tonight earning up, earning their badge, I'm sure for government or, uh, local government. So thanks for being here.
So I, 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 okay. Non- I, I don't see any other, um, lights on, so I'll go ahead and wrap things up. Yes, we are honored to have, uh, Troop three oh seven here in the audience. And we have Kate Adams as well as, uh, Teddy Mason. Um, and I think they're in the process of working on their merit badges, badges for citizenship and community. So we wish you much success and good luck to all of you. Uh, you wondered, wondering how I know all that information. Matt Abbey has texted me and let me know that you were going to be here. So I wanted to make sure that you all were recognized and I thank you for enduring this whole meeting. Um, and, and hopefully you'll take something back with you. I also would like to congratulate all the city council members here who were running and, uh, doing your thing. And, and I'm so excited for our, our, our council members who were re-elected as well as the new person who's joining us. Uh, and I'm thankful for the current council members that we have right now for the hard work that they've been doing. And, uh, Counselor Dominguez, we all really appreciate, uh, the time that you've been able to spend with us and, uh, share your wisdom and insight with us. And we're just letting you know that your family, uh, is in our prayers, uh, for the, the, the journey that you all are on right now. And if you ever need anything, uh, we are here, uh, for you all. And then I would like to thank everyone, uh, for voting for me, um, to be re-elected as mayor. It's truly an honor and a privilege to work together with this amazing team. I never take any of the credit for the success that the city is having because it takes each and every one of our staff members as well as the council members to bring about the positive change that we like to see on a daily basis. So thank you all and I really consider a true honor to be on the team with each and every one of you. Um, so with that being said, uh, this meeting is officially adjourned at nine p.m. Thank you, everybody. Good night.